So we've returned to regular meeting. It is 7:16, and I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So under announcements, the real estate tax bills were mailed out, so everyone should have those. There is also an adjustment in the tax rate has gone down, but the assessments, as we know by the presentation, has gone up. Anyone with questions should contact the assessors department, and they can help walk you through your property card. Wednesday, January 16th, at the Hartnett Middle School at 6 o'clock, there'll be a joint meeting between the Town of Millville Boards and the Town of Blackstone Boards, along with the school committee. It is a public meeting. The Town Hall will be closed Monday, January 21st, for an observation of Martin Luther King Day, and also our Selectment Meeting will be moved to the 22nd of that week. Mr. Reposer and I will hold our monthly Saturday Office Hour meetings, Saturday, January 12th, and February 16th, from 8:30 to 10:00 a.m. And we do have the Town Clerk Top Dog winner, which we will have to wait for our next meeting. We have it, but the winner has just been notified today, and so they will be at our next meeting for that. All right, so. And we are going to look at our approval of minutes for December 17. Is there any adjustments, changes, feedback?
Motion approved.
Motion's been made to approve the minutes.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And the vote is unanimous. All right. Right next are our Department and Boards, and I'm going to take a little leeway with our agenda. And we have Ezra and Mino. We do have your community outreach was in our packets as part of the, your commitment, and I know that you're here tonight to deliver the requirements to our town planner, which we are absent of one at the moment, so I'm going to receive those from you. Do you have anything to say, or just?
Only that this is, yep, this is packets 12, I believe, required for special permit.
Yes.
And then 17 packets for major site plan review, which is what Millville requires.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just two separate occasions. Two checks, one for special permit, one for site plan review.
You're going to grab those. We're going to take those on behalf of the planning board and town planner, and we will make sure that they get those.
Thank you very much.
All right. Did it go well tonight?
I think it went well. We had a couple people there.
Oh, good.
Paul was there, so you can take it from him, what he thought, and Catherine too, but I thought it went well.
Good, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that those go to the right place.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So move to our Department and Boards. So our first one would be the Animal Control Officer. So if you could come on up and join us. And we're all aware of the situation, but you may want to do some follow-up for the general public as to why you're here and your request.
Okay. So as all of you know, I'm the Regional Animal Control Officer. I cover Blackstone, Millville, Oxbridge, Mendon, Douglas, and I've been filling in for Hopeville for the last year. Up until now, I have, was given a vehicle from Oxbridge last year. It was a 2015 Ford Transit. Unfortunately, about two and a half weeks ago, while traveling up Chestnut Hill Road in Millville, I struck a deer. My vehicle was put out of commission, and now it looks like it will potentially be a total loss, and we now have to go through the process of dealing with the total loss and then possibly acquiring a new vehicle. When this occurred, I asked Jen, requested the Board's permission for use of the Millville vehicle. And although when I had the Ford Transit, Millville wasn't included in their mutual aid contract with Blackstone for use of the vehicle, Oxbridge did give me permission to use it if needed in Millville, and I have over the last year, year and a half. And then, so when Millville gave permission to use the Millville vehicle to cover my other towns, I've since just been sharing gas between Oxbridge and Blackstone, and haven't really needed it in Millville, but been sharing gas between the other two communities. And basically, I wanted to see if I can get permission from the Board to utilize the truck more now while the transit is down, and then continue to utilize it once the transit is back up. It's actually worked out really well. In the last week, we've had to trap two dogs in two separate locations. One was right here in Millville, up on Thayer and Berthlet, where we had to trap one dog, and then another one I had to trap up at Sutton Street Soccer Fields in Oxbridge. And it actually worked out really well, where the truck fit the dog-sized Haverhart trap really well. So I was hoping to get Board's permission to continue to utilize the truck, and then moving forward, utilize it more often with use of the shelter and animal control, and just keep a mutual understanding and agreement.
So when you had called, it was kind of a emergency.
Yes.
So I had polled the members for the use for that time. I'd spoken to the majority of the Board, and, you know, it was allowed, and I think it was the spirit of, you know, regional programming and services. So we just want to make sure that it's in the books, so that if a situation was to come up again, that we wouldn't have to do that kind of roll call vote that... So you're looking for, I just want to make sure, because when we first spoke, it was for those kind of emergency times? Are you looking for a little different now?
So I'm looking for slightly more leniency. Obviously, right now, until we get the transit back, I would like to still continue to use it for everywhere. And then I'm kind of looking for more, as obviously we use it for Millville. So when I'm out doing barn inspections in Millville, I'll be using it in Millville. When I'm out doing regular Millville calls, if I don't need the other town's vehicle, I use it for Millville. But if I'm out in, if I'm out and on a call in Oxbridge, and I get a call to Millville, Oxbridge has given me permission to just use their vehicle. So what I'd like, so obviously, I'd like to continue to use the Millville vehicle now while my Oxbridge vehicle's down. But going forward, I'd like to still utilize it, you know, more often. If we have a situation where we have to move a dog and a Haverhart trap, whether it be for Millville or Oxbridge or Blackstone, we can...
When you need the bigger vehicle.
A bigger vehicle, or just a longer bed, and it just, it makes life easier. And it also works out really well on the extreme heat and the extreme cold, having the Oxbridge vehicle that I can use in Millville, because as you know, a pickup truck and, you know, extreme heat or extreme cold...
It's either the freezer or another.
So kind of, it's mutually beneficial for everyone.
So this is the vehicle that was just basically sitting and used only when Millville needed it?
Yep.
Basically, when I was purchased, was specifically for that purpose.
Yep. So specifically, it's always been an animal control truck, and it's worked out really well as an animal control truck. It's just, like I said, for a while, they're kind of went slightly unused, because Oxbridge was really good about letting me use the Transit in Millville.
Right.
And like I said, I'm still planning on using the Transit when I'm out on a boat, and I'm still planning on using the truck when it's specifically just for Millville. But like I said, if I get a call and I have to move a trap, or, we actually just became partners with Walmart, just signed us on as a huge donor. So once a week, I'll have to go to Walmart in Northbridge, and they're going to start donating to us. And we actually, so through the donations, we're going to do kind of a pet food pantry out of the shelter. But then along with that, we're also partnering with some of the local food pantries to help people lower income, be able to feed their animals.
That'll help you move some of the food and stuff in a larger vehicle.
Yes.
Or easier.
Yeah, it just makes it easier, so, because I don't have to worry about, you know, putting a dog in there if I have to go get a Walmart shipment.
Yeah.
I just, you know.
Yep.
Makes it overall better use for the community.
And essentially, the other towns will be paying for the gas that's used for those calls. Is that how you're doing it?
Yes.
In track of miles?
So everyone's kind of been just pitching in. I've, obviously, the way I've been doing it is I, through Oxbridge, I cover three communities. Through Blacks, I cover just the community, Blacks and community. So I'm kind of doing three gas fill-ups in Oxbridge, and one gas fill-up in Blacks.
Gotcha. All right. So the Board's wishes?
We need a motion, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I make a motion that we continue to allow ACO Sullivan to use the Millville truck as needed, Millville Animal Control Vehicle as needed, as well, not just in Millville, but in other communities on an as-need basis, per his description.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion, questions?
Just under discussion, just, again, to keep the regional spirit going and the goodwill, if nothing else, is totally worth it to me, so.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you guys so much. Really appreciate everything.
Thank you. Chief Landry, you're next on the agenda, under our Department and Boards. I feel like I have the wrong packet.
I think it's maybe just not a voter. Or you have the wrong packet.
I have too many packets. All right.
I'm thinking this is Mr. St. Pierre.
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead, Chief.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to present Edward St. Pierre to the Board of Selectmen in the Town to fill our current vacancy that we have within the Police Department. Mr. St. Pierre comes to us from the retail environment with the change of career into law enforcement. He sponsored himself through the Police Academy and graduated in 2018. He went through a, through a pretty exhaustive background check, and everything looked fine. So I think, given we have a mature department with all the offices, he's going to fit right in. And I anticipate that he will leave.
Wow.
I anticipate that he'll leave quite as often as the younger officers tend to do. So I think it's a good opportunity to add Edward to the Police Department. I think he's a good fit, and I've spoken to him in depth, and I think he's going to be a great addition to the Police Department.
All right.
Make a motion to appoint.
Edward St. Pierre through June 30th, 2019?
Yes.
Second.
Motion, any other discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So have you had a chance to?
I was going to shake his hand.
I was going to say, have you had a, we will, we will. Have you had a chance to go through the town and serve on some of the training modules and?
We have a voluntary in-service training program. Before anyone's appointed, they spend a minimum of 80 hours with us.
Right.
Before they get to this step. So he's completed that, so he's familiar with the town and what we do, our related policies and procedures. So he's well ahead of where he should be.
What do you think?
It's a great town. I love it.
That's a good answer.
Yeah, I spent the last several weeks driving around, getting to know it. Like it, I came through the day and the night. Really feel comfortable, getting my feet wet here, and I like the town. It's a great town.
Well, thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Tom.
Now I can shake his hand.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Congratulations. Look forward to working with you. Sorry, Tom.
I'm sorry.
I think you should be all set. Am I next for the?
Your laundry list.
Okay.
Yes.
Laundry list.
I just do what Trish tells me.
Okay.
Okay. Yep. So I have your part-time officers and your fire department.
Correct, the yearly appointments.
Yes. Along with the other one.
They all are established employees, been with us for a while. We did add three new part-time employees to that list. They're in the training, voluntary training mode as we speak. We desperately need them to fill the required shifts. Once again, they are not new employees to the town where the cost is shared by the town. They are more or less per DM and get paid as they work to fill shifts that are available. So the same thing with Edward, I forgot to mention, everything that's required of them, they pay upfront. And that's something we've done in the past. I just started doing that with full-time employees as well. So Edward's on the hook to buy everything he needs, and he knows that. And upon completion of probation, he will get reimbursed. Customer really is a full-timer, that's what we do per contract. But on the part-time side, they have to purchase everything. We give them nothing, other than required handgun and badges. So either they make it or they don't, and some don't make it, and some do. And that's why we go up and down with the numbers. So those are the people that we need.
All right. So I have a list, if anyone wants to make a motion to appoint them through December, what was the appointment goes? You said it's every?
It's every year now. We changed that contract actually a while ago, so this will go...
Through December 30th?
It will, December 30th.
30th or 31st?
Oh, 31st.
31st.
Sorry. And those will be the part-time?
There's just one particular officer not on that list, that's Officer Sullivan.
Mm-hmm.
He's in the middle of a three-year appointment, so he's not on the list.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So I'll make the motion to appoint the following to a one-year term as part-time police officers. Thomas Reynolds, James Cusack, Philip Franzen, Steve LaCava, Roger Lavalley, Harry Cervantes, Nicholas Green, Eric Ward, Drew March.
December 31st.
December 31st.
2019.
2019.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion, questions? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the vote is unanimous. Fire Department.
That is the next topic that's going to take most of our time.
You have the reappointment, so you're a strong chief.
Yes.
So you have reappointed these individuals, and you do not need our votes.
It's more as a courtesy, let the Board of Selectmen in the Town know who works for us.
Excellent. And now you can continue.
Now we get to the problem of the EMS. Two months ago or so, when the former Town Administrator requested that I lay off a full-time fireman slash EMT, I told her that it'd be very difficult to do, to replace that individual in what that person did. Normally, we have over 700 shifts that have to be filled per year by per DM or part-time EMTs. Given that we only pay them $7.50 per hour, and given unemployment's low, finding candidates to do that job is very difficult to do. We currently have six on the books. We advertise all the time, and we're still having problems recruiting people. The layoff resulted in the addition of over 257 new shifts. So now this town is expecting me to fill over 957 shifts with five part timers. I'm here to tell you, I cannot do that. I cannot fill these shifts based on what we pay and the number of people that we have. I did have an option a couple of months ago at one of our meetings where you laid off the full-time fireman and you saved roughly $57,000. I counted with that and said, okay, can we fill that position with a full-time EMT at minimum wage? Now, I'm pretty confident I can fill a full-time position at minimum wage with benefits, and that would alleviate the problem that we incurred when we laid off the fireman slash EMT. What I'm here to say is, unless that position's reinstated, I cannot do the job and fill these shifts. And that's the fact. Our license through OEMS could be threatened by the inability of Millville to staff their ambulants, which is a requirement. So we have to make a decision whether we want an ambulance or not. We've been in negotiations in the past with other communities to speak about regionalizing the ambulance, and that is going nowhere. And I don't expect that to go anywhere for the foreseeable future. So the solution is to go back to two full-time employees during the day, one being a fireman and one being an EMT, at a reduced rate. And that will, it doesn't eliminate our problem, but it gives me someone to fill 257 shifts that I can't fill now. Unless somebody has a better idea or a better solution, I'm willing to listen. But due to the lack of wages and the lack of people, most EMTs that are working now for a private ambulance service, they're making well in excess of $15. We pay $7.50. I don't know what people expect me to do.
That's the evening shifts.
It is. Well, that's after 4:00 p.m.
Right.
They're working 13 hours for $75. Who does that?
Right.
And so when we had the conversation to lay off the full-timer, I warned the Town Administrator that we would have this issue, and we have it. So at the end of the day, the solution is to return that shift, that position, to an EMT status. We still save over, I think it's $32,000, and we accomplish what I need, at least going back to two during the day. So what's happening now is, the limited group that we have, they see the availability to work the 8:00 to 4:00 shift. So they jump on that shift. But now they're not working the 4:00 to 6:00 shift. So when you call on the weekends, it's very difficult for me to send the engine, any ambulance out. It's just not working. So I'm here to ask that we reinstate. I do have the money in my budget. First of all, the money is there in the budget. It's not something I'm asking for more money. The money's there to pay this new position at the full-time rate until June 30th. The only issue would be medical. If we hire someone that needs medical, then obviously, we have to add an additional policy. A caveat, though, is something good to know, is our newest appointment, Ed St. Pierre, he is entitled to benefits. He informed me tonight, he has not taken benefits. He does receive his benefits through his wife and her employment, and that's not going to change for any time soon. So at the end of the day, what I'm asking you to do is to do something that costs us nothing, because we already have the policy in place that we budgeted for, and we have the salaries in place. That's all I can say. And if we don't, I don't know what the answer's going to be in the future, because we just can't staff the ambulants. On the revenue side, every time the ambulance goes out and we're not part of it, we lose that revenue. And we lose quite a bit lately.
So I have a question. The person who left that frees up that policy?
Yes.
Was that an individual or a family plan?
It was Officer Lima. He resigned a couple of months ago. He had a single policy. So right now, we do have single coverage available.
Through, on the police side?
On the police side.
It would have to be a?
That we could utilize through the fire side.
Right. It would have to be a FANCOM transfer.
Right. Well, not necessarily, because the line item for health coverage comes out of Town Hall. Doesn't come out of my individual budgets.
So I did reach out and found out about that line item budget, because some years, we'll have a buffer of one policy, just in case a spouse loses a job and we have to pick up somebody. But that number is the exact number that we need, because it was November when we voted on the budget. There is no leeway, no wiggle room, except, with the exception of what you had just said, that one officer left who had it, not taking it. Now there's a half a year of single coverage there.
And just a sidebar, not to get on to that particular subject, that is not being prudent to only employ the policy that we need. Theoretically, there's five police officers that do not take medical coverage. They could tell me tomorrow they need it. So not have a buffer of at least one or two. In my professional opinion, doesn't make sense, but that's what the town chose to do.
So are you saying, as of right now, just looking at the salary side of it, if you brought on an EMT, there's going to be zero change in the revenue?
Right, because the money for that position is already budgeted.
Right.
In the 2019 budget. So that money's there. The only issue would be the, obviously, the health coverage. If we switch it over from the Police Department over to the Fire Department, that doesn't exist. The only smaller cost would be, obviously, your pension contribution, FICR, and then a tax that we're accountable for.
Would I assume that would be in the salary line of it?
Right.
So by doing this, we'd have full ambulance coverage, 8:00 to 4:00 daily.
Correct.
Of two individuals, if an ambulance call comes in.
Correct.
So 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. is still the $75 sign up for the shift type of coverage.
Correct.
And approximately, what are we, how are we staffing that? Like 50% of the shifts, 80%?
Because of the change of the day shift, we have those people, like I mentioned, applying to work 8:00 to 4:00. Those people now would be going back to work in more of the weekends and night coverage. So that number would increase. Right now, I don't think we're at 60%. It's drastically down. Now, it's only, not only because of the reduction in the force, it's because of the other two factors that I mentioned of low pay and no one's available to work.
So if we brought on an EMT, as you're saying here, would we increase our ambulance receipts?
Theoretically, yes, because when I only have one EMT working, we still send the ambulance out.
Right.
But we receive no compensation, because the mutual aid department takes that revenue.
Right. So we're going to be increasing the revenue for zero cost, is what you're telling me?
Yes. And don't get me wrong, it's not a perfect solution. We're not going to fill all shifts unless theoretically, we added three more EMTs. What the cost, I already figured it out, was well over $100,000, so we really can't do that. But this will help fill the day shifts and fill the night shifts and weekend shifts once again. And we will receive some benefits in salary, not salary, income from the ambulance. At the end of the day, to me, it's not a difficult decision, really, a no-brainer, because we've already budgeted the money. The money's already in the budget. And fortunately for us, Mr. St. Pierre not taking the insurance, it is no cost.
Unless something happens to somebody's spouse.
Yeah. Or anyone within the whole town.
That could happen at any given time. This town's been very fortunate for 12 years. It's been only one person taking health care all the Police Department. So you multiply that savings to a million dollars over 10 years.
It's moot now.
So I shake my head all the time when I talk about this stuff. It's basic economics, and this works, and that's why I'm requesting the change. Theoretically, you're right. I could hire that EMT on my own, because I'm a strong fire chief. You're 100% right. I could. But the issue is, I don't have the funding for the health care.
Right.
So that's what I'm looking for. I know I'm a tough negotiator, but that's common sense.
No, and you know what? In the past, you've, through all of the budget cuts, have come to us and saying that, though you have the strong chief, you do look for the guidance and approval and conversation that goes along with that. And though you can make that decision by yourself, the support of the Board and the conversation that goes with it is just as important.
I would never make those type of decisions. It's not my style without coming back to the Board of Selectmen. So that's what I'm requesting. At the end of the day, if I repeat myself, I think it's a win-win, at least a stop-gap measure until July.
So I had a conversation with you, because you asked me to put it on the agenda, so we did have a conversation. And I did kind of make it clear that if the Board opted to go this route, it really is only till June 30th, because the next budget
Correct.
is a whole nother process.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, this would be a six-month trial, a six-month look at, a six-month coverage to provide ambulance service in full from 8:00 to 4:00, and then hopes to increase the overnight shifts. and then hopes to increase the overnight shifts as people shifting and taking...
No, that's a good point. It's a trial until June 30th. It doesn't cost us any money. So, why not apply it?
Did you have somebody in mind that you know would or would not need coverage for this position at this point?
You know, we do have applicants currently working as per DMS. I anticipate one or two of them applying for the position. But I'm going to offer it outside to get the most qualified person I can get, because everyone we have, they're basically just starting their career. So, I'd prefer to hire someone with more experience and give those other people the opportunity to continue to work as a per DM.
Okay.
I'm in the opinion, if it's a zero-sum game and potentially get ambulance receipts to potentially cover benefits that this employee may or may not need, I think it's definitely beneficial to the town.
This town needs to make a commitment to the ambulance service. Either we're gonna do it or we're not.
Right.
Simple as that.
This is still just gonna be a six-month band-aid.
This is only gonna be a band-aid until June 30th. And at that point, when I go before the Finance Committee in a couple of weeks, it starts all over again. But the funding's there now.
Right.
So, why not try it?
Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion of support or not support for the fire chief and his thought process in staffing the ambulance?
I'm in support of the staffing. Like I said already, it's a zero-sum game, possibly an upside with ambulance receipts.
Should I add some motion?
I don't, are we making, do we need to make a motion? I think it's just a support.
I look for your support when you make those type of decisions.
So, he does like a motion, a motion of support.
I do like a motion of support.
Emotional support, along with a motion of support.
I really do.
I'd like the motion to support the full-time EMT.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All right, being known, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It was unanimous.
Right. And you know what? By the time I advertise it and fill it, it's probably gonna be sick a week of February and March anyway, so...
Doesn't make me feel any better.
Doesn't make me feel any better. We'll try, right? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Am I done?
I had nothing else. Just, oh, can you just tell the board about the exciting policies that you're gonna start to send over in February?
Every two years, I reinvent my policies. And there's probably 80 policies to 100 policies. So, I will present them to the Board of Selectmen, probably 10 policies at a time. For your reading pleasure, if you can read them and sign off on them, that would be great. If there's any major changes to them, I usually highlight that change. Change in state law, you'll see the change. Otherwise, if there's nothing highlighted, it's more or less the same policy that's been in existence. It's just been reviewed. The district attorney likes to see that. It's good for liability reasons that we review our policies and we have the best-practice policies at all time, in which we do. We follow all the CLEA-certified policies. So, we're always up to grade with what we do. So, you will receive them. And like I said, it'll take probably six months to get them all done.
So, he had asked, it's very thick.
It's gonna kill a lot of trees if I print out every policy. So, I didn't know if you wanted them on a disk or I could email to you.
I prefer email.
And then you can sign off on them, get them back to me, I can do an attachment.
Yep. If you do just so many per time.
I can do that.
And then kinda spoon-feed us?
Yes. And if you have any questions, certainly get back to me. It's very dry on some things you read. Some things you may get excited when you read it.
Does your department require our motion for each of those?
No teardrops on my paperwork, please. But otherwise, it doesn't. But if you have a question or concern about one of the policies, simply ask.
So, it's a informational piece and a conversation?
It is.
If anything comes up?
It does affect the town and the residents of the town, everything we do.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I don't see our highway surveyor, who's gonna come in and just kinda let us know where things were going. We did receive a letter from a resident. I did speak to him about that driveway on Hope Street. And it really comes down to, there's a portion that was filled in with like...
Coal patch?
No, it was a recycled gravel, because the road was washing out. So, it was put in to protect the road. The issue with the person's driveway, it needs to be a key cut, and it needs to be hot-patched and brought in. And then for the amount that it needs, it needs to be when there's something else going on in town. So, he assured me that he's gonna reach out to the individuals and kinda explain that to them and follow through with that. He did tell us that we are up to date on our Central Street project. So, everything's looking good on that. Our council on aging, so if the members of the council on aging, I see the chair is here, along with maybe the whole board. So, you're welcome to scoot your chairs up, the members of the board, or if it's just gonna be the chair, however you decided who's gonna... Oh, yeah, they're just pointing at you, Pam. So, come on up. And if a member does wish to speak, they will need to come up to the table and not shout from the, converse from the seats, just so our audio can pick you up and our residents at home know who's speaking. Hi.
Hi, I'm Pam Dean Kobedish, the chairman of the COA board. I've been the chairman since July 1st of this year, this last year. I've been on the COA board now exactly one year. A lot has happened since I've been on the COA board in the past 12 months. And a lot of good things have also happened. To tell you a few things that have been going on with the COA board is that we are trying to do everything we can do for the elderly in town. We have, we have had, let's see, bum my notes here. Well, first of all, let me tell you that with the senior club closing on June 30th of this year, the COA board has done its best to get the seniors in this town active again and continue to be active. We have been meeting continuously with the, the COA board meets with the senior club, vice versa. We also meet with the Chestnut Hill Community Club, because we're renting the hall two days a week, Wednesdays and Tuesdays. The senior club and the COA board both have agreed to pay one day per week, on Monday and Tuesday. The Chestnut Hill Community Club has been absolutely wonderful. They have given us their club at the cost of what it would cost one of their members to rent, not an outsider. Not only do part of us also belong to that club, we belong to the COA board, or we are, the majority of us are seniors and we belong to the senior club. So, there's a lot of interaction going on. So, everybody kinda knows everybody, which is probably a good thing at this point. We have a very strong seven-board members on the COA board. We've done a lot. We're gonna continue doing a lot. And of course, our ultimate goal is to have the senior club on Prospect Street reopened. That's our goal. Along with every senior in this town. I mean, it was heartbreaking to see it closed, at no fault of any individual. Unfortunately, with the voting, the way it went in town, it was the town peoples itself that voted against it. And we didn't get the override. We didn't get to keep the senior center open. But we're hopeful. All the seniors that I have contact with, which are like 60 of them, are very hopeful that things will change at the next town meeting and voting and et cetera. Hopefully, the override will change and we can reopen the club. Part of the reason why I'm here tonight is to brag, to tell you how wonderful we've been and how hard-working we've been and how much we have taken out of our own pockets to help the seniors in this town. It's been a very costly thing, and I'm not complaining one minute. And neither are any of my members, who have contributed money out of their own pockets and have given out of their own pockets to help the seniors in this town. That's not gonna change. I mean, this is just a giving town. Most of us, a lot of us are life members in this town. A lot of us are newbies in town. But I'll tell you, everybody here in Millville loves Millville. So, we're here to stay. We're not looking for any way out. And we're not here to be crying on your sleeve. However, everybody has, has their point. Everybody wants money. Everybody wants to do things. Everybody wants things now. And everyone tends to forget, our senior center is closed. It's, we, the COA board do not own the senior hall. We don't own it. The town of Millville owns it. We're just the advisory board. I just need to let the people out there understand that, that we, the advisory board for the senior club, enough of the senior club, yeah, for the senior club on Prospect Street, that we want reopened desperately. We understand that it's Millville that owns it. And it's to you that we're coming to, the board of Selectmen, tonight, asking you for any consideration or any information you might be able to give us. Or do we just have to sit back and wait for another town vote on an override for more money? I don't know. I'm running out of answers, and a lot of things are getting stale. And I, myself personally, get a lot, a lot of phone calls at home. Of course, being a social worker for 40 years and retired has helped. I can, I'm a good listener. And a lot of times, these seniors that call me do need someone to cry their, cry on. The ones that we do service at the Chestnut Hill Community Club, which is a fantastic club, they were there years ago before they even built the club. So, there's a lot of familiarity. And one of our COA members, Lain Eether, has worked very, very hard. She's a officer in the club, and she helps and makes sure the place is tidy and clean, it gets opened. And she kinda like quietly, underfoot, is making sure that things are running smoothly, I'm sure. If I try to turn around, something is getting cleaned. Diane Lamro, who is also our office secretary, is also a secretary for the senior club. And she also is a very active member of the CHOA. And with her, she has coordinated many things. She's, we, as the COA board, got together with the senior club. What we've done is we have gone to Celtics Wild Animals Zoo. We took all the seniors, not all of them, we took many seniors with us. And I've done a portfolio booklet on it that someday I'd like to present to you, just to show you on all the fun things that are happening in town with the seniors. Diane Lamro was the one that really is a spearhead for the Celtics Wild Animals as far as getting us there for the winter, Wonderland Lights, a train ride. I mean, it was, it was just incredible. We had so much fun, and it was so cold, the coldest day of the year. All right, all that said and done, we all, so the COA board, totally, completely out of our pockets, not a dime to the town, went and put on a great big breakfast for the town of Millville seniors and disabled. We were very fortunate enough to have Joe Reposer, at the time chairman of the board, attend our little breakfast, and he had a great time. It was nice to have a representative from Millville there. And we worked very hard. We had a lot of games. We played a lot of games. We gave away a lot of door prizes. We have a member on our board, Laurie Legia, who is, who works full-time plus. And she is at every single meeting, and she's always there willing to help and do extra secretarial work if necessary, and always getting us this big, beautiful, expensive baskets. So, we have things to auction, not auction off, to raffle off. Okay, because we as a board cannot accept making any money. But we can certainly raffle off gifts and give them to people for no money. And Laurie's been very instrumental in doing that. And then we have Lois LaFlem with us on the COA board. She is one heck of a woman. She's been there since day one. I think she's been there since time began. So, if ever we're having a meeting, and if I stumble onto something that I'm not really clear, she'll correct me right away. You know, which is a good thing, because she knows, she knows all the old laws and all the new laws. And she's one, she's an asset to our board, and she's a great cook. And then, I wanna tell you really quick, I know I'm just rattling on. We have gotten approved to have movies. We have movies that we play at the Chestnut Hill Community Club. And we, we had to apply for a license. And it sounds like really big shot stuff, but we do have a license, a motion picture licensing corporation license, that we had to apply for and pay for, and we get approved for a whole year. We get approved as of December 1st. So, to let you know that on December 4th, we had our first movie. And we saw White Christmas. On December 2nd, no, December 12th, we saw It's a Wonderful Life. We have one set up for January 15th, Sound of Music. It'll be at 12 o'clock on a Tuesday. And then we have one set up for February, February 12th on a Tuesday at 12 noon. That will be our fourth movie. Now, you're probably wondering, how does all that get paid for? Well, we got the license, so we're all set. But thank God, we have Tim Labonte. I gotta tell you, he's an angel. The man works for us free on his day off. He comes up, he gets, he puts up the projector, he puts up the screen. He makes the movie look so, so real. I mean, he's just, he's just incredible. And he stays here the whole entire time we're having the movie. And he's doing this on his free time. He's not getting paid for this. Of course, every senior that's there loves him to death. I mean, you know, how can you not? He has been absolutely wonderful. Again, that was, that's Tim Labonte. And I just admire the kid. He's just, he's just a wonderful person. And he's making a lot of seniors in town happy. So, we're gonna start our movies this month, one day a month, because it is winter. And we are, the senior club, or the COA closes the Chestnut Hill Community Club if it's a snow day. If the children are not in school, we're closed. So, that's like a sign. If it snows, we're closed, basically. And we just will make it up another day. So, that has not been an issue, thank God. Here I am rambling around. We do have, we do report every single month to the Black Sword Enlightener. So, I have an article written. I read an article every month for the Black Sword Enlightener. I don't know if anyone gets a chance to read it or not, but it's generally a very good article. Ellen Bowen used to write it when the senior club was open, and she was doing all the correspondence for the senior club. But since it's closed, and we really don't have an active senior club in town running, except two days a week, I've taken over as the COA chairman to write an article every week, I mean, every month. And that's worked out okay. It's a lot of work. I had no idea. It's a lot of work. I just wanna, just roughly, I'm just gonna tell you really quick. The, the COA on Mondays has knitting classes that are free. You just gotta bring your own yarn in the morning. And Juliette, um...
Gauthier.
Gauthier runs the show. She's excellent, she has big, big, big class. Everybody loves her. So she's there every Mon- Monday faithfully, with all her women, and they, they just have so much fun.
No men?
No, no, I don't think so. I haven't seen one around.
They're welcome to come.
And then, on Monday afternoons, every other Monday afternoon, there's a, a painting class. And that's done by a very professional painter. His name is Darryl. And he comes in, and for a very nominal amount of money. He comes in, he has the canvas, he supplies the paints and the glass, et cetera. Then, one Monday a month, we have the senior club meeting and luncheon at the CHO, C-H-A. And they have eleven o'clock meeting, the senior club. Then, then, then the bocce club with a, a full cost dinner. And then they have just a lot of fun. Basically, a lot of fun. There are no meetings for the senior club on, for January and February because of the winter months. They're gonna presume back in March. And then, on Tuesdays, Mary Ryan has a dance class in the morning. She's line dancing, and she has quite a group. And everybody seems to really love it. And then on Tuesday afternoons, they have, Marge Keegan runs the pitch game, card game. And it's free, and there's no money involved, but they have a ball. I've watched them play. And then, and now like once a month, we'll, we'll, we'll have our movies. But when we're through with the movie, then the card plays a while later on in the afternoon. Okay, do you have any questions?
I'm gonna say, probably coming, coming at all.
I just, I just wanted to let you know that we're working so hard. And we are spending a lot of money out of our own pockets. And, and my board is so great. They truly are. I just want you to, I just want to reiterate that, how hard we're working, and how much we love this town. And we can't wait for the day we open up the doors on forty Prospect Street. And I'm sure you, you feel the same way. I'm sure you feel the same way. And, and I'm, I'm just here as, as the chairperson, wondering, maybe there's something you can tell me that I don't know? Or maybe it's just something?
Sounds like you know everything, Pam, so, just saying. As of right now, with the budget being approved in November, as much as it breaks our hearts not to have you in there, you know, it's, we haven't had a discussion about that. You know, we shored up the building, making sure, you know, we're actually dealing with some other issues with the, with the building. Not major issues, just to make sure everything's set and...
Right.
Animal-free underneath, because there are some cracks in the, the things going on. What do they call that? The, like the resin thing? So, you know, we're making sure that those things are being addressed and looked at as they come up. I, I would love to see you back in there. I do. But sadly, it's, you know, the budget was cut down and, and to have it open, just...
A lot of town effort went into making that facility materialize. And be a shame for it to not to continue.
So I have said before that budget season's coming. Jill probably received the Council on Aging budget template that needs to be filled out. And in that, I think you, you're gonna wanna express your, your need of, you know, having the center open and having, you know, all of that information there so that when you present to FINCOM and the Selectmen for that cause. And then this board will then, you know, have to decide how we're gonna approach the budget season and what's that gonna look like. And that discussion hasn't happened yet. It's not on the agenda yet.
Would it, would behold my board to go in front of the financial board? Only because Jill Anderson only works eight to ten hours a, a week. She used to be, as you know, our director, but isn't any longer. So she's our senior coordinator. But she, but she has, she's zeroing in. She's doing flu clinics, she's running the van, which is very, very important for the handicapped and disabled in town, making doctor appointments, doing some runs for, for groceries for the elderly. She's also, what else is she, she's also doing the Fuel Sisters program, whether it's apps or mail-ins or walk-ins or whatever, appointments. So she's very, very busy with her eight, ten hours a week. In fact, I know she's doing much more than... But she, that's her. And that's how she was when she was our director. But in hindsight, the money is gonna run out. Only, anybody's gonna run out, but, but...
Yeah, you had a finite amount to start with.
We only have a little bit of money. And that little bit of money right now is going to the van drivers. They get paid. Okay, they don't drive the vans for nothing, as you know. But that's just a reminder. And, and also, we have to pay, we have to pay to have the vans fixed.
Right.
And that costs money. So all these like monies, that eats up like the big part of what little we have, you know?
So in regards to sitting with the, the FINCOM or the Selectmen, we're gonna have a conversation later this evening. I've reached out to the Chair of FINCOM. We've zeroed in on a couple days. So once the budgets have all been submitted, we will set up a schedule. FINCOM and BOS will sit together and call in each department. So instead of going to one or two boards, you're going, everybody's gonna hear the same information, the same night, from the same people, and it's not gonna change, or hopefully it's not gonna change, from meeting to meeting. So that conversations and questions can all be heard by the same people making financial decisions. So working with Mrs. Bueno and her board, I've got some dates that I'm gonna be presenting to this board as to how we wanna structure that, what night works for everyone. So when you submit your budget, we'll, we'll reach out to ask you what night works for you, what time works for you. We'll give you some times and dates. And then you and your board can come in and say, you know, this is our budget, and this is what we really want. And then each of the, the departments can hear that. So you will have a chance to address both boards at the same time in regards to your budget request.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all your time.
Thank you, all of the members.
And thank you for all you do, all of you.
Good job.
All right. Building Department? Did you wanna, what do you wanna do? I have you for the permit pro.
Yeah, what's the other topic?
Uh, well, we, the letter of twelve five is, is being taken care of. And then the other thing was the senior center.
Yes.
But, but that can be a conversation, now or later. Just because I know it's not...
Popular topic.
It's not your, no, and I knew they were gonna be here. It's not your responsibility, but it is your expertise.
But it's also an expense for the town.
Right.
Both now and potentially larger in the future.
Right.
So that's what I came to talk about, two things I was approached in the town hall, about concerns for the senior center and the expense of having it unopened for use. Evidently, a fuel bill for late autumn was in the neighborhood of four hundred dollars a month. And I don't have that documentation, but I'll take their word for it. So the town made a decision to shut the building down. I think basically that involved locking the door and turning the lights off, but not addressing mothballing the building. It has been observed that the skirt that runs around below the actual floor level, which most people would think of as a foundation, has holes in it and is providing access to people that don't belong there. The four-legged kind, not the two-legged kind. So if we are going to save money in Millville and cut the budget and do things like shut the senior center, which I have always supported the seniors on the town floor, having some white hair, I could probably, you know, be a member down there. I think we need to look at turning the heat down and saving some money there, paying attention to what's going on around the skirt before we have rodents get some damage underneath there. And maybe look at blowing the water out of the pipes and getting rid of a potential future expense when we have burst pipes, because we've turned the heat down. I can look into that.
Yeah, we also need to probably do a walkthrough and make sure that the equipment that is inside is able to sustain through a cold.
Well, I know there was a concern about the piano. Evidently, it's a very nice piano in there. And Jill looked into the piano, and I made some inquiries as well. Lot of good piano, spent time in cold storage. What's really bothersome to most fine musical instruments is up and down changes in temperature and excessive heat, a lot more than excessive cold. But to, to turn the building down and bring it back up for a meeting and turn it down again and bring it back, that's gonna ruin anything. So I, I don't know what the board wants to do, and it's not a decision that needs to be made tonight. But if we're looking at deteriorating on the exterior, which would lead to infestation, and then you've got damaged wiring, plumbing, insulation, whatever, we certainly don't wanna be incurring an expense to do some repairs before the thing gets opened back up when the budget's finally there. If you're trying to save money and nobody's using it, let's save some money on oil and give it to the seniors to keep their programs going. That's item number one.
All right, so can I follow up with you?
Sure.
About the building? Because I did walk the perimeter. I took photos that I can share with everyone. There's, once you, once there's one opening, they really have access to the hole underneath.
I, I can tell you from personal experience, it's incredible what one little hole can lead to.
I mean, these are not small holes.
Well, I don't know, I haven't seen it.
No, these are like toddler. One of them is large enough where I would say a toddler could crawl underneath.
Okay, so now you're not talking about squirrels, you're talking about raccoons and...
You're talking larger animals at this point.
You can get some serious damage from...
So that's something I, I would like to at least maybe get with you one afternoon.
I'll go walk around it tomorrow.
And then we could discuss some potentials and put this on a future agenda item as to what we need to do to make sure the building's safe and, and address those other things, okay?
I, I don't know.
Return it in good condition.
Better condition, maybe.
These holes can't have just happened, though, I mean...
A lot of it is the result of downspouts, the excessive rain we've had. It's kind of washed, that curtain wall and...
It's like, what is it, like a plastic or a resin? It's not like a thick, it's just kinda like...
Cementatious material.
Probably something like Drive It, which was very popular, and it looks good for a while, but it needs to be maintained.
It's on the front of the building?
There is one hole near the hall door that is large. And then when you go to the back, there's another hole. And a third hole, which looks like it was probably the first hole that was ever there, and someone just put a rock there. But now you can see, like, it almost looks like the under, like, rubbing, as if like an animal has scooted underneath, like the path of the grass is such that it looks like something was scooting underneath.
Animals, from my personal business experience, once they gain access to a place, they're going back there. And the only way, if you fill that hole, patch it, get rid of it, they'll put a hole right back where you patched it yesterday. So now you're in a position of getting rid of animals as well as fixing them.
They don't look like animal holes. It does look like, you know, they're very straight, like break within the skirt.
Yeah, but if there's any animal going in there now, because he found the hole.
There could be, yeah.
That's what happens.
But...
And I asked the chief last week about, you know, do you, when the building like that is shut down and there's not activity there to, you know, some people with nothing better to do start to hang around there? And he said, well, we try and do a lot of walkarounds and site visits, so he doesn't think that's an issue.
And I do, I do believe that the residents across the street do a good job in informing when things are awry.
Well, let's just not let it go to hell and have to...
So they have good neighbors. Right. All right, so I'm gonna get with you, we'll talk about that, and I'll put it on for a future agenda item for this board.
I was gonna ask that maybe if you just take a look, flashlight, if you see any creatures, creatures, we can set some of those...
They usually nocturnal.
Have a hot trap that you were talking about, and hopefully you won't need one the size of a dog.
I mean, I can't say for sure that there's animals under there, but an animal can fit in there. Yes, it is. All right. Permit pro.
So, permit pro. I don't know a lot about this. I know the town received a grant, at least this is what I've been told, somewhere around a year ago, that paid for the purchase and implementation of setting up online permitting for the Town of Millville. And the ultimate goal was to have the permitting function integrated with the assessor's office and their online database for all the properties in town. And it would be utilized by the Board of Health, the Planning Board, building, electrical plumbing, and, and fire and so on, so that whenever there was a permit or a report or whatever on an individual property, it got recorded into and became part of an electronic database. Most of the work to get it up and running has been done, and has never been turned on. I've spent a fair amount of time on it. Christine has spent some time on it. At this point, I, I can't say that it's any labor saver. I, for example, it takes X amount of time to do all the paperwork now. You would have to do that amount of work and then maybe a little bit more to input the information into the system. The difference being, once it's in the system, it can be accessed by pretty much anybody now and ten years from now. There was an upfront expense for this, I don't know what it was. I don't know what the written agreement is. I know that sitting in the town hall, when Stephanie gets a bill, she walks around and says, what do you know about this? So there was a bill for an annual payment for the Building Department of approximately five thousand dollars that was paid on or about July first. There was recently, and I don't know the connection, another bill that was incurred for the assessing part of it. I'm assuming that there's gonna be another bill for about five thousand dollars on July first of two thousand nineteen. If the whole town does not get on board, and I don't think that five thousand covers all the departments, it's just for building. So if Board of Health gets on and Planning gets on and so on, every department's gonna have an additional fee. If the whole town doesn't utilize it, I, I don't know that it's worth pursuing and continuing to invest money in it. I don't know what the agreement is initially, if, if in accepting the grant, the Town of Millville agreed to utilize Permit Pro for twenty-four months or thirty-six months. I don't know anything about it, other than I'm supposed to be building a budget. And if you ask me if I wanna put five grand in my budget to run that next year, I'm gonna say no at this time.
So my, my memory serves me. I believe that was part of the, when the Lieutenant Governor came out? What grant was that? It was in the Community Compact. It was like another one. When the Lieutenant Governor came here.
It's Community Compact.
So, okay, so we fought, we had one, and then we got a second. We had a smaller one, and then we got... So basically, if I recall correctly, it was all part about streamlining municipal governments. And I know there was a big presentation on it. I don't know the exact information that you're talking about. I think that's something we need to find the contract and look at it. But I do know that it was supposed to, if utilized by all of those departments, is pretty much a database and information place so that the assessors are talking to the buildings and talking to Board of Health, and everybody's accessing that information in one location. But like you said, is everybody utilizing it? Are we using it to the maximum and the potential that it has? And is it, is it working? Is it worth... And is it, is it working? Is it worth what we're paying? Though it may have been paid upfront, if we're now paying the bills out of our pockets, we need to find out whether or not.
It's, you know, it's the future. It, it is going to be in every community in Massachusetts.
It's now. It's not just the future. It's now.
A lot of the larger communities are. And for instance, I know that with the fees that the building department takes in, we could pay the $5,000. We earn that money.
The community compact was a hundred grand.
It was a hundred thousand dollars. So I don't know how, how that was divvied up and how it's paid.
That's why you guys make the big bucks.
Is it still from there?
Spend your free time trying to figure this out. And, and I'd be concerned about having signed a commitment that says, "We have to use it or we're going to have to pay back grant money." Uh, and, you know, if it's signing on for one more year and building and...
Right.
Trying to get that module go and, and add on others, I'm willing to do whatever you want. I'm just looking at putting a budget together.
Right.
And I have not utilized it at all. I've spent a lot of time talking with, uh, updating forms and doing paperwork and it's mostly set up. But I'm, I would essentially be doing what I'm doing now and then doing the same thing again until it is up and running and you've totally switched over to that system.
So do you know, was there anybody spearheading that project that was...
Jennifer was the...
There was nobody else involved?
Was the point person. And I have somebody at Permit Pro that was assigned to us and they've done all the, the uploading and the, you know, I don't, I'm not a software person. I don't know what it's called.
You're giving them the form, they're putting it into computer.
I gave her all the forms and I went and updated everything that might have been from 2007 and it now has relevant code references to 2018.
But you're saying we paid a $5,000 bill six months ago and we haven't used anything?
No, the, the whole, the way it's set up is yours, they, they come in and educate you and then they have what they call a sandbox where you're supposed to go and play around. You've probably done it a bunch of times. The sandbox has been there for a while and virtually every time I've gone to the sandbox, there's been an issue. Sometimes there's six, so I write them all down. I compose an email. I send them off. They play around with it. They get back to me. So, so far, you know, we've paid Lincoln to do this and had zero results and there's no information in there. There's not one permit that's followed through on the process. It is to the point where that could be done. But if I'm trying to juggle money and I'm looking at it from running my business, I'm saying to myself at this point, i- it's not worth it. It's not a $495 expense that you can build on. It's a five grand plus this department, plus this. And if this department doesn't have somebody in the town hall on a weekly basis that's implementing and utilizing that, you're never gonna get your money out of it.
Well, we also have to look at how it's tied to the grant, if it is tied to a grant, to see if it's reimbursable.
And I don't know if this $5,000 bill was, there's money sitting in a grant somewhere to pay it. I don't know that. I have not called Mrs. Callahan and asked her. Those are the three things I wanted to talk about.
So we need to, um, do some follow-up on the Permit Pro information.
I think it's, you know, I don't know what we're committed to do aside from what I'm aware of. You may be committed to do other things and spend other monies.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna have them pull the community compact of grants and pull any information on, on Permit Pro. And then once Sherri has found those items, I'll come in and I'll let you know when I'm coming in. I'll make it available. People can screen it and look at it and see what, what we see.
I wrote an email to the lady that I have been in contact with there and asked specific questions about costs and continued expense. And she got back to me with those numbers and that building would have an annual...
Okay.
Can you forward that, that email to us?
Sure. What number are you?
I'm number one.
Oh, okay.
So are you. Yeah, just send it to all of us.
Yeah.
Alright.
So we have it.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Not today. There's a whole pile of stuff, but...
Not that's it for today. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we have our Town Administrator Search Committee. So any members from that group? It's just you?
Well, if anyone else wants a computer, that's probably fine.
If anyone wants to, um, from that committee wants to join us at the table, they're welcome to. If not, if you're going to share, then you will need to come up to the table, um, if you're gonna speak. Alright. Alright. How are we doing?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Um, so I guess the first thing I just wanna make sure was clear was the next meeting's Wednesday at 6:30. I know, Erica, I didn't email you directly. You certainly posted it in time, but I didn't email you directly. So I just wanna make sure that you know when that is, um, here, 6:30 on Wednesday. And then I sent over a couple of things for review and approval, hopefully. So the, I emailed the, um, job description. Um, it's around 130 words, so it meets the criteria under the 200 posts for the Beacon.
It was on an email today, I believe, right?
I thought I had printed it. I know I've seen them.
I have an extra.
Maybe it was in the email that I saw.
Yeah, Tom and I share, 'cause I didn't check my town email.
Thank you.
I read it earlier.
Whoa, the table moves. Noted, honey.
And I saw the different, uh, advertising options you had sent.
Yep.
Some good stuff.
So I don't know if it's possible to review and approve that today or if we need to do it.
No, I think the goal is to approve it today for the advertising, um, so that it can go to the Beacon and those others. That's, and that's why we kinda had that rushed timeline because their deadline is the...
Seventeenth, I think.
Seventeenth.
Jerry, how different is that description than the previous one? Is there a lot of change to it?
No.
'Cause I, I never saw the first one. I read that one today.
No, it, there is not a lot of change to it. It is, uh, um, you know, except for the, uh, the real thing that I think about before we had to have any responses sent into the, um, town hall before. I wanna make sure they come here. We've asked your permission, if you would, I know Jen would be asking the same thing, if we could, uh, have Diane be able to, uh, sequester those and hold those. And then, um, I believe that Jen is gonna be or someone designated by Jen would come by and pick those up.
Right.
Okay, but we wanna let you know, so you let Diane know, 'cause I don't want Diane saying, "I'm doing what?"
Right. Yeah, and I think, you know, those items and, and we had talked about the previous, um, issues with it. So we'll, we'll avoid that by having the unopened envelopes will be given to you.
Yep, that's, that's kinda key to keep it sequestered that way. Other than that, the, uh, it's pretty much what we had before. It is, if you looked and we've looked at literally probably dozens of these, uh, in our meetings that we've had and, um, this is pretty much, uh, the same as other towns use. And it's, uh, it's truncated because it's eventually gonna go to a link. And then if someone wants to really delve into it and figure out what's up and what's the DSL or DLS saying about what, they can do that to link.
Oh, okay.
But this is really to get it into the newspaper, 'cause you have to have it by 17, um, January to have it, have it to them in the publication. That'll be both, I believe, I'm accurate, uh, electronic and, um, print. It'll be in both mediums.
Okay. And who's gonna send it to the Beacon? Your group?
That was actually one of our questions. The thought was it came from the Board of Selectmen to that publishing agency and I think that's how it went last time. So is that...
We just need to make sure we know, so...
Yeah, I just wanna make sure it's published.
Okay.
I don't want each of us thinking it's being done and not being done.
Okay, so that's over there.
So if you can send the final products to the Town Administrator account and to Selectmen Five, I will, typically what I've been doing, 'cause I don't want everything tied to my personal email, I send things from the TA account along with my name, my thing and my email so that it's actually here in file on the, on our server for the access of the next Town Administrator.
Sure. Okay, sounds good. I can do that by tomorrow.
Yep. Yes, I don't typically come in on Tuesdays, but I can...
Well, we have, it's only the seventh, so you have 10 days, so...
I come in usually Monday, Wednesdays, so... But I can send that over to Beacon. Now, you're talking about alternative locations?
So, um, I know Jerry says that usually, that last year we weren't just in the Beacon. If we wanna take that approach again, we certainly can. But to make sure that we presented all the options to you, some of the members in the job description team went and researched some other avenues for posting. So the second one, which is the International City County Management Association, it is more money, but it does get to a broader audience and is specifically targeted for this kind of role. So it's $600. If we don't have it, that's fine, but I just wanted you to be aware of that option.
Do you know what the deadline is on that one?
Um, I don't. It doesn't say here. It, I can tell you that it's by job function, Town Administrator, $600 and the ads run for 60 days. So that's, I'm not sure of the deadline.
We don't know the deadline, but the good news is it is 60-day run.
Right, I'm just thinking if we did the Beacon first and let that run for a couple of weeks to see if we're getting some hits. And if not, maybe we can get the deadlines on the others.
Okay, I'll take that action. And then Indeed was free to post and ZipRecruiter offers a 30-day free trial. So since those are no-cost options, I thought they're kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Why not to do at least one? Um, and all the others had costs like $175, $275, and I didn't think we wanted to get all funny with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we appreciate the, the information.
Yeah, we'll have it for the next time in case we need it.
Just a question, is, are any of you a member of MMA?
So you're talking about the, how we used to log in? Is that what you're talking about?
I don't know. It, it said the member rates were...
Discounted, yeah.
Yeah, they're discounted relative...
The ICMA?
I think we're all members.
No, this is for the, this is for the MMA, the Massachusetts Municipal Association. To be a member, if you are a member of that, the Beacon gives you a $100 discount for it. I didn't know if any of you were a member.
I think we all are members.
You are? Okay, if you are a member, then you can use it under the membership heading and that way they save a $100 just to put it in for the Beacon. If we can do that, then you're able to cut that fee in half. And that still be, is still subject to the same dates, still subjected to everything else, but you can get it in and get, save yourself...
Because before I used to, you used to be able to like make your account login. That's how you got some information before. But now their website has changed and I think all of the information is kinda generally just made public and there's no longer a sign-in where I can sign in and access information. So, um...
Tell them you're a member anyways.
I know I gave you my password and my account and everything last time so that you could use it.
If you can use that, that'd be great.
I will look into that when I send it to them.
Uh, just a, a message to you. Right now there's currently, um, six, um, um, TAs, four TAs actually, and two that are what they call managers, town managers. So there's six pending right now on the website.
How far, what's the radius?
Well, the interesting thing is that Concord, Mass, um, you've got one, two, three, four from, uh, actually three from New Hampshire, one from Vermont, and actually a fourth one, Hollis, New Hampshire, this came on. So you've got six right now that are on there. Basically, except for Concord, Mass., which is pending, coming on, uh, the other ones are all from out of state, either New Hampshire or, um, one in, uh, what is it called? North, Hot, North Hartford, Vermont.
Okay, so that's good.
You know, they're at least, they're not, we're not competing with them directly here in Massachusetts, which is a good thing at this point in time, at least, you know? It's probably a good time to jump in while they're not competing on, against it.
And then the next item, just to note, um, we have, I know that the Committee on the Salary and things like that, they had a meeting recently. There's been no consensus built. We're just starting the conversation to see where we wanna go. But one thing we did notice that in the bylaws, the salary is set 16 to 75,000. So I believe we would need to change a bylaw if we wanna go outside that range.
So it's the, um, compensation plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that actually is gonna be, need to be updated regardless because it has, um, a $11 rate in there. So the minimum wage has gone up.
Oh.
And it's going to go up continuously. So we are gonna have to look at that, um, which I found interesting that the police chief is listed as per contract, but the Town Administrator is not listed as per contract. There is a definite salary and I think it was our first run and that was what, 2006? Um, that it was, um, changed. So, um, you know, you learn things and, but that whole compensation plan is gonna have to be revised because some people are making 11, but there's also some people on that list who are making 12, but now the minimum wage has gone up. So that's going to be an agenda item regardless at the annual town meeting.
But what is it that we're gonna be able to have as a goalposts from the minimum to the maximum relative to this position at this time against candidates that would apply? That's my question. In other words, right now, as we review it, we see it as 60 to 75. That's, that's the goalpost that was set.
Yeah.
You might wanna change it, you know, and...
And we budget it higher than that.
Yeah, downstream. Right now, it's about the best we can come up with. There's a range there. There's a $15,000 range.
Right.
But I don't think, unless you tell us different, that we have the right to change it.
Yeah, I know that there had been discussions.
Yeah, we also budgeted it higher, 20% higher.
It was a 20% increase to that? That was with, uh, FENCOM? That that was decided?
I was told that was a placeholder.
That's recommended as a placeholder. Absolutely. We talked about that that night you were here.
So...
That is a placeholder. Still, you got the goalposts and you got a placeholder.
But you also, you know, we can make a line item for, you know, um, different types of incentives for an individual if they come on with a salary of a certain amount. And within negotiations, we could do incentive programs to increase that based upon performance criterias. Um, and our last one, we negotiated, um, healthcare in lieu of, um, some compensation. So there's a lot that we can do within contract negotiating.
Yeah, that's all, that's really up to you folks is what you wanna do to negotiate, whomever the person, him or her, may be.
Right.
The real key to it is, we just need to have something in there to at least say, "Hey, guys, here's what it is" and whatever you guys wanna think about in terms of what you could use for a, uh, a negotiation. I wouldn't say ploy, but a negotiation enhancement to help that if you need, if you needed to do so. It may not be neat that we may have lots of people that would like to come in for the salary arrangement. We had, we had 17 last time with that range.
Right. You didn't put the range in last time, did you?
No.
Salaries, um, in regards to experience. So I think that's good and then we'll see. You know, some individuals are gonna, listen, a smart individual who comes here is going to look at our budget. They're going to look at our past practices. They're gonna come in, they're gonna get the town reports. They're going to be well-versed in what is Millville and what we pay and what our issues are. Um, so, you know, let's see who applies.
They do their homework correctly. They shouldn't have an issue with it.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the good news about it. So that's why if we use that as a goalpost, they can at least figure that out and then dive under it on a link and be able to see other things the town's going on, DLS report, all those things.
Exactly.
You know, that'll help them understand what the probability is of being negotiating the other type of things like elder shows.
Yeah, exactly. Yep. So no, I think this is good. I think we can, we can get that out to the Beacon. We can talk about, do we want to do Indeed and ZipRecruiter as a...
If they're free, why not?
If they're free. Is that the consensus of the board?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so we'll do that.
Was there a per-click fee? Is that that one?
Yeah, that's one here on Indeed said it's, uh, I think when a candidate clicks on your job description, um...
So that's for premium placement. So it says other pricing options for things such as premium placement, pay only when a candidate clicks on a job description. So it's basically Google AdWords, but for the site, yeah.
Okay, so we're not doing premium?
We shop just like sponsored sites and you get top placement.
Right, okay.
I just remember seeing the five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right, I saw that too. I said, geez, what does that mean? Every time someone clicks on it, we gotta pay you?
Right. So, and I think too is once it goes out in the Beacon, there's then a live link that can be shared, you know, um, networking with friends, families.
Everyone grabs those things and throws them across all the... Truly the key when people look at to begin with, then everything else multiplies off there.
Right. Yep.
And we might wanna meet, perhaps stagnate the postings, just the Beacon first, Indeed, since it's free the whole time, it doesn't matter. But ZipRecruiter, you get a 30-day free trial, so it's not free forever. It's free for a month. So that's just something to keep in mind.
I'll have to check because if it comes with a membership, they may have to, we may have to put in a, a credit card.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I don't have that access.
Ah.
And I would have to make sure that someone cancels it.
Okay.
Prior to. So I know the town hall has a credit card to do those types of things, but I personally do not have that access. So I'll check on that.
It's a lot of responsibility.
I don't want it. I don't want it. Hardly handle my own debit card.
Yep, yeah, it says free to post jobs and then you can do the promotional if you wanted to.
Okay. Alright, alright, so we'll do that. Is there anything else?
The last thing for me is just to make sure that we keep, um, this as a standing item on the Board of Selectmen agenda moving forward. I'm gonna do my best to attend every single one and if I can't be here, someone else from the team... I'm going to do my best to attend every single one, and if I can't be here, someone else from the team will be here. You know, Jerry obviously knows what's going on and all that stuff, so...
You're already on the next agenda.
Okay, great. Very exciting.
You're already there, you're in the template. I don't even have to add you, you're in the template.
Okay. And then, I don't know, Jerry, if I missed anything?
No, I don't think so. I think, um, we have, uh, as we have done prior, we have, uh, meetings off-site, uh, with numbers of grouping that Jen was, uh, kind of out to set up with Aubrey. Um, and, uh, in fact, I've got one tomorrow night, um, and we're going to be discussing certain elements that we've all been assigned. And then, uh, we bring those elements back to the main body. We then discuss and debate those things, come up with what we think is the best thinking, uh, for those particular points. And then, uh, from there, we'll push those things forward back to you folks.
Okay.
Just a way to move, move it up quickstep, I guess is a way to look at it.
You don't need this back, right? I can leave it in the, um, master folder of the meeting? Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Thank you for your...
Thanks, come on.
Thank you. Huh?
I'm going to leave after this, so...
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
I'd leave after this if they let me.
Thank you.
All right, so, that was it for our department boards, it was a little heavy, but it was needed, so... Um, correspondence, I'm going to run through quickly. Northeast Water Solution, um, our bacteria, water at the school is absent for bacteria.
No bacteria.
The full report is available, um, in the, um, in the town hall if you need to see it. So, the next thing was, um, everyone should have received a letter from the, um, Post 411, the American Legion. They had a couple, is that in your agenda? It was, uh, it was on the back. It was on the back counter. Okay. Everyone saw it? So...
I don't know why it didn't copy, but... I actually had two, for whatever reason.
Did they put you down twice?
Apparently. I just wanted to make sure I got them.
I can go off my memory, my memory. So, basically, they had three items. One was as, um, a discrepancy in the rent based upon some bills in an agreement that was made, um, with Mrs. Callahan. So, I, um, over the week, that was one. Um, the second item was, um, who is their con, who is their contact person? And the third item was, um, the mode of communication in which they would prefer to be contacted. So, I did contact the, um, their...
Commander.
The commander, thank you. Mr. Shea, over the weekend, I spoke to him, so I sent out a letter to him today, um, with the three bills that were being removed from the rent over the next three payments. Um, I've given him my contact information and told him, you know, these are the bills, and we can follow up if, if you need it. But they didn't even have a copy of the bills, so I wanted to make sure that they, they had those copies and the description of the work that had been done. So, that letter went out to him today, along with addressing the other two issues of a contact person. I informed him to continue to use the phone number for the town administrator, the email for the town administrator, that they were being checked every day, and that I was following up as needed with those things. And the last one was the manner in which to contact them, so if there's an emergency, they get a phone call. Um, there is no, um, texting or emailing them because they don't have a, a post-email. So, this way, having things, you know, streamlined through paper and letters being mailed to them would be best for them. And I acknowledge that, you know, we've received that information, and, and going forward, that's how we'll contact them. So, I sent that letter out today, um, and if there's any follow-up on that, I'll let you all know. Um, the next thing is the DOT report. The bridge report?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have that?
That I do.
So, it is our Central Street Bridge Report. Um, it was also sent over to Brian, so hopefully he can come in in the, um, future and kind of just give us an update on how our Central Street Bridges are holding up since the initial build of 2006 was the date on the bridge, so... Right? Yeah, and there's, some of those pictures are not pretty. Um, so, we have a note from the town planner in regards to the main street property, keeping us informed of, um, a situation. So, I wanted to make sure that you all had that, that's been sent to the clerk and the building inspector. Planning Board. They have given us a draft of some zoning bylaws, amendments, and a public health notice. So, this is in draft form. And we're going to do a follow-up with the planning board, and I'll get into that in a, a few, a few topics. Planning Board. It's a zoning bylaw subdivision rules and regulations, according to Chapter, uh, 40A, Section 5. So... They're just, Hillary, before she left, sent that to them as some, as a, a point item that they need to, um, keep working on. There is a public hearing for the planning board on Monday, January 28th, 2019, at 7:15 here at the town hall. And it's a request by Ken Markhart of Ken's Lawn Care for a special permit review for a retail landscaping business associated with business at 137 Lincoln Street. Um, you will see an email dated Tuesday, the 18th, from the Department of Revenue that the tax rate has been certified by the DOR for the town of Millville. Uh, CMRPC, um, sent us an email asking if we're interested still in their, their help while we're absent of a town planner. Um, I emailed back and forth a little bit with this, um, this woman, Trish, and I had a, I called, um, Mr. Hadley, who's the chair of the, um, planning board, um, and it took us a little, little detective work, but we found the, um, proposal with the scope of work, with the dates and services, um, that has been given to the planning board, and they're going to follow up on that. So, it's kind of a, um, as-needed basis, a per diem, different things at different rates. Um, that is on file with the selectmen, so if you want to see what that looks like. But ultimately, the planning board is an elected board, and they make the final decision on that hire. So, there, on top of that, I did express to the planning board that if they needed a joint meeting or selectman representation at their meeting, to let me know. The written complaint we spoke about earlier in regards to the highway department needing to key-cut and hot-patch. All right, so, we'll go on to new business. The annual town report, there's a deadline for February 8th. So, I'm asking, as I've said before, that I run this meeting, but we collectively run the town since we don't have a town administrator. So, I was hoping that, um, I was going to ask Mr. Alward, um, this evening if, um, he would, but we'll need someone to write the, um, the Board of Selectmen's, um, report for the town admin, uh, for the Board of Selectmen. So, I didn't know if anyone wanted that, I can reach out to Mr. Alward and then put that back out to our membership. Does that sound okay?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Especially since we are all on our, we all have missions to complete.
Right.
And at this time, Andrew does not, so...
Correct. So, what I did is, under the administrative update, we don't have an administrative, but we have administrative things that are happening, I've put that back into our, uh, agenda to show that, that we are working on very important things, um, and that each member of the committee is liaison to projects that typically our administrator would be doing. So, I've listed everyone so that each week you can update the board, if you need to, on any of the items that you're working on. So, that's number 11, so we'll get into that later. We have, the town clerk is, the second item is, is everyone good with the town report?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, the next item B is ethics requirements. The town clerk had updated me that there is 29 individuals within town that, um, have been told to take the ethics report, you have to do it, the test, you have to do it every two years. Um, and that we have 29 individuals who, some of them who have been serving for more than a year, who have yet to do that. So, I've asked her to email everyone to give them to the end of this month, and in February, I will just have to provide a list to this board, um, with their names set.
She sent out a copy.
So, what she sent out in our mail, we're supposed to get every year regardless. So, yeah, so now they've gotten another, but they've been emailed multiple times, so... So, I've asked her to give, like, that they need them by the end of January, if not, then I'm just going to make a list. I mean, everyone, it, the test is not difficult, you can't fail. They walk you through it, if you get it wrong, they bring you back, they explain it, and you get the right answer, and you move along. It's, you know, I don't know how long, maybe 20 minutes?
Probably a little longer than that.
A little longer.
I would say about 45.
I'm a fast reader, then.
Yeah.
So, um...
Yeah, 45.
So, um, but it's something that has to be done, and technically, she can send the list to the ethics committee, and the ethics committee can follow up with individuals if they're out of compliance. So, um, I just want to put that out there. Um, and she gave it to me, she told me about it, and I think it's important. All right.
In any elected official, if you no longer hold a position, you're still responsible for ethics beyond...
True, yeah.
Beyond the, uh, determination.
Yeah, because there's some things you can and can't do after your, your position. Mm-hmm.
That's part of the test.
It is. All right, so, any other new business unforeseen by any members?
Eight.
Okay. Um, old business, so Town Administrator Search Committee, advertisement, description, and salary. I think we just had it listed twice, um, so we'll move on. Financial policy update. So, we're all to put in, did we all put in the, our little section? Okay. Everyone, were you able to gain access?
Financial policy.
That's, um...
And you get the code, and you get signed in, and then you can highlight it and make changes, but...
Oh, I sent that to you like in November, didn't I?
Yeah.
That's why I forgot, okay.
Okay. Because...
That's why I forgot.
Did you have a lot of changes? Because I, I'm not an accountant.
Right.
I mean, it all made sense to me, but...
So, with...
There were no misspelled words, right?
No, and some of it...
Thanks, Tom.
In yours, yours probably was okay. Mine was more so that I actually had to go, because they talked about different things, and I actually had to go into our town bylaws and cross-reference it. So, mine was a little different, everybody's is a little different. Well, with that said, would it be okay if I sent you a new section?
So, I sent, did you get my section from me when I, I sent it to you with notes?
Probably. It was, it was a while back, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was on a plane, I think, when I sent it, but, um, there were notes in there because a lot of it referred to, um, actions that people were doing in town hall.
Okay.
I don't know if that's what they do, so if you could look over that.
Okay, I will.
People in the town hall need to review my section on the highlighted ones, um, because they were like, Jane does A, B, and C, and then John does...
I think that's the plan, is like, we go through it all, and then he's going to have the town employees go through, you know what I mean? But I think he wanted our first glance at it. So, um, so my question is, can I divvy up the next sections and have Justin send you your next section?
Yeah.
So, um...
How many more sections are there?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, well, eight. Eight. And there's two with, um, their school departments, so we really don't deal with that, so there's eight left, and then recommendations, so...
So, send us two sections, sections each.
Well, there's 10, there's five of us. So, I'll split them up, because some of them, like, one is four pages long.
I'll take that one.
Versus, um, this one is 13 pages. So, what I want to do is kind of figure out the pages, divvy them up, and have, so if you get the 13-page, maybe you'll get the four and the eight.
Why don't we also base it on, um, knowledge?
Okay.
If it's an accountant thing, send it to me as opposed to him.
All right.
Just a recommendation.
Cash receipts, financial administration of grants. So, I'll, um...
Yeah.
I'll, uh, send this...
I don't know much about grants, so, I mean, just like...
It's just the administration. So, we'll, um, I'll send those to you. I'll divvy them up, I'll list the items, and if you feel that you, I'll list the sections. First come, first served, grab the section that you feel most comfortable with.
Okay.
It's kind of what we did in the meeting, right? The first time? All right, so we'll do that.
And if you forget your password, they'll send you a new one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because you can't...
You have to use a password every time.
Yeah, every time you log in, it sends you a new password, because you can't do it from your phone, because when you log out of the phone, you go back to get the password, you've now logged out. So, you have to do it from the computer or two devices. All right. So, the next item is the interim town administrator. Um, so, I sent a variety of emails to individuals throughout the valley, um, town administrators and managers of such, and I received back some very thoughtful, insightful, and helpful information from a handful of them. I have approximately, one, two, maybe five names of possible ones. I was also given the MMA contact. I guess they have a list of people who are working intrums. Um, so, the question is, um, how do we want to proceed with, because I'd like to kind of do this sooner than later. Um, do we want to contact people and ask them to send us our proposals based on the money we have or we think we have?
Is there any money?
Well, yeah, because Justin, Justin really, Justin really took the reins from the, from October to get us to town meeting. It was, you know, outside of his scope of responsibilities.
Agreed.
But we, we asked him, we begged, we begged him to do it and help us through that, to get us to town meeting. So, now he's, he's reverted back to his accounting piece of his job and, and, um, whatever the Diane does in regards of, for administrative at her rate, at $25 an hour, is, so we have to look at that line item. But I think if we find out people's rate of pay, it kind of tells us, and qualifications, it could tell us what we could hire a person for, or amount of time per week.
Hour-wise.
On how we could do that. So, I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I'm in the ballpark, like, is the sound appropriate? Is there a better way of doing it?
So, you didn't get any ballpark, uh, rates?
I got names, I got names of individuals, um, you know, this guy's really a stickler on money, this guy is a great guy, friendly guy, personable guy, will bring your staff all together, this one, you know, one of the, um, the, um, my, Mr. Wojcik from, um, Northbridge, his reply back was, like, every person he told me about had a description of strengths, which was really helpful. And then, I had a couple other names that were given from some others, just like, and then it was the MMA, and I emailed her and said, could you please provide me a list? I have not had a cha, chance to check the email today, um, so I'm not sure if it's there, but that was sent out maybe Thursday of last week or Tuesday or Wednesday, so, um, I'm waiting to hear from them. So, I don't know how we want to go forward. Do we want to ask them for proposals? Do we want to...
I think we need to start with, A, what we have available to spend.
Mm-hmm.
And then, B, find out what the rates are approximately, and C, how many hours a week do we need?
Okay.
Do we need or we can afford?
Yeah, actually, yeah.
Do we need to put together a timeline?
Yeah. Um, do we want these just to be, like, some people, I have their phone numbers, or I have an email to them. Is that something that you want me to follow up with, a conversation with these individuals?
They're going to give you their rates.
For rates?
Yeah.
For rates and availability? Does that sound appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. All right, rates.
Can we set a date to review those?
Next, next meeting? Next meeting?
Yes.
Rates, availability, and maybe just qualifications?
I wonder if I have the, I got the spend from Justin last time. I don't think I brought that with me tonight.
You don't have it? Okay.
No, I don't have it tonight.
All right. So, the next item, are you good? Um, the next item will be, uh, the fiscal year two, uh, twenty-twenty budget calendar. So as I alluded to earlier, um, I reached out to Mrs. Bueno, I asked her to ask her group, which she did, right? 'Cause you did get back to me, um. And their availability is Tuesday, Wednesdays, six-thirty is the earliest time. So what I'd like to do is, the budgets are due mid-January, so what I'd like to do is find it from our committee, what night works best for us, so that then we can, with Audrey and, um, we can set up a, a budget calendar in departments to come in, so they can do one presentation, as I said earlier. Um, you know, we're gonna put, we're not gonna put the police chief the same night as, you know, another big department.
Anybody else.
But. And, and Pam, we're gonna give you all the time you need to do yours, and Jill to do yours, so we wanna, you know, we wanna, you know, it was funny, 'cause I did say to the chief, well, I'd like to find out, like, how much time do you think you need? And the chief said to me, I only need twenty minutes, but you all may need an hour. So, because we do, we delve and we get into the questions, so, um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll create the, the schedule, whereas, you know, those that are heavy and, and questions may be only one night, where another few groups might, you know, might come in on another night. So, we have to look at the budgets, we have to see what they're asking, and then kinda pace them out, so. Uh, what is the preference of this board as to an evening?
What week are you looking at right now?
We're looking for February and March and all of April. I'd like to, I'm not saying it's gonna be every week, but I think we need to have a night that is better than others. I know we all have stuff that comes up. But I don't think it's gonna be one meeting, it's gonna be a series of meetings, so.
Six-thirty's a decent, uh, good time for me, so.
So, does the six-thirty time work?
Either Tuesday or Wednesday. I mean, obviously, things can come up, but.
Yeah, no, and that's expected, I mean.
Yeah, that's fine, um. Yeah, either one's fine. Depends on the day, it depends on the day of the month for me, so.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday works best for you. All right.
I don't have a lot of availability in the next five or six weeks, but.
Okay.
You're talking after that.
Yeah, the budget's coming in mid-January, by the time we look them over, we set up which departments is gonna need more time, then we'll, we'll start looking at those. All right, so I'll let them know, um, that Tuesday, Wednesdays is, um, works for us. Was there a, a greater preference for one than the other?
I didn't see the poll, you know, what came back from, right, everything was.
Oh, she just, that's right, 'cause it was through email, okay. I'll check with her. I, my husband has a standing commitment on Wednesdays, and I'll get a hundred texts from my children if I'm here too late. That's why I left my phone in the other room tonight. So, I know Tuesdays works better for me, but I'll, I'll send it back to, um.
Yeah, either one's fine.
To Aubrey, and then we'll see if, if it was, like I said, if Tuesday's better for the majority of you guys, and I'd rather go that way, but we'll see. Whatever works out, we'll, we'll make it work to get it done. All right, so. Okay, with Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and we were good with the time. All right. Anything else for the budget calendar? Suggestions, comments, concerns?
I just wanted to let you know, I did reach out to Justin right after our last meeting, let him know that we agreed with, um, his timelines.
Oh, good.
And I asked him to send out all the budgets by the twenty-first to each of the departments, um, so everybody should have received.
They have received it? The columns are there?
He couldn't fit as many columns as I originally asked.
Okay.
So we went back and forth a little bit about, but obviously, if any particular department wants more information that they don't have on that particular sheet, they can ask.
Okay, all right, and, um, the Town Administrative budgets were sent to Diane, which I'm going to send to all of you, 'cause that is all of our responsibility. I am gonna work with looking for the current contracts and, um, you know, copiers and contracts, and see if there's any adjustments for the, the fiscal year coming up to make those adjustments, so that's gonna be a work in progress, um, to get all of those, and really go through the files and the contracts and agreements, even just the photocopier agreement. Sometimes those rates change, or, so.
And next thing you know, you're paying for every click.
Yeah, mhm. So we'll, um, we'll do that. So I'll send you that budget, um, for, that were sent, that the Town Administrator is responsible, which we are now responsible for. All right. Just wanna put it out there that our Board of Assessors, which is a vital piece of our community, is still looking for two members. We have the membership to do the work, but, um, one of the members was a fill-in, Mrs. Matthews, who was our Town Accountant, who was just doing it to help us, 'cause she loves us, um, but she is retired, and, um, you know. We need to.
Enough, sure enough.
Enough is enough, and we need our residents to step up, so if anyone knows anybody, it's an online class now, which is nice. It is an open book test, you cannot fail, and if you do fail the first time, they let you take it a second time. I have done it myself, and I was able to pass it, so. So if we have anyone who's interested, the, the meetings probably last maybe twice a month, an hour, hour and a half apiece. It's, it's, it's pretty clear-cut, non-controversial for the most part, so. It's there. All right, old business, Marty's Fine Wine. As of. His liquor, their liquor license for, um, this current year was all signed off, the chief signed off, um, I have everything here. We were waiting on one tips, um, certification from an employee, and that person was taking it today, as of one-thirty, when I spoke to, um, Trish, and she said it is complete, so I'll need a motion to approve. Let me just make sure there's one license. There is. One license for Marty's, oh, Marty's, um, Fine Wines. Alcohol beverage, yep, liquor license for, through, um, December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
So Erica made a motion, did you second? Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the vote is unanimous. All right. We have to sign. I have for you. I hope I have for you. A list. Of the fobs. It was just left for me today, so I apologize, just give me a moment. Oh, here it is. We don't have to discuss it this evening. We're in, um, conversation with the security system to ensure that we can do a second code of sorts. And we also, at future reference, um, will need to know whether or not we wanna do our boards having access, those that don't have office space in, that come purely to meet, if we wanna do access during a certain amount of time. Um, I know we've talked about this before, you know, maybe a five to eight, where they can actually key in, have their meeting, and leave, um, and lock up, um, do the code and secure the building. Um, whereas other people who have workspace, who might come in on the weekends, and that, their access may need to be different. So I've given you the list, I asked you to look it over, and I'm gonna put it on the next agenda, so that we can, um, talk about securing the building and making sure those who need a fob has a fob, and if we wanna restrict any.
Why would anybody have more than one fob?
I asked the same question. Well, I know, like, Justin Cole.
Yeah, that one I understand.
That may be because they, you know, the two people who work there, and then maybe they have one for the emergency person. But some of the others, I don't understand. It has, you know, a name, and it says times two. I don't know why. I wanna reach out to those and ask that question, 'cause I don't understand, so. Actually, Stephanie is on here.
Yeah, I just saw that, too.
So, I think there's some questions that we need answered, but, like I said, we did get the active fob list today, okay?
Are there cameras on that side?
There's cameras, yep. The whole, the outside and the inside is all covered, with the exception of the room in which we use for executive session, but nope, it is. Well done. All right, so our administrative updates, so our selectman liaison reports, the things that we're all doing in lieu of an administrative, uh, administrator. Uh, Mr. Alwood is not here, but he doesn't have any items that he's currently working on, so I'm gonna, this is alphabetical, um, Mrs. Blake, um.
Yeah, so I.
Any of those items?
Yeah, so the search committee, obviously, um, tonight, we went over with Jerry and Jennifer. Um, that's the latest and greatest we have on the search committee. There's a meeting Wednesday night, um, here at six-thirty. BBT flyer, there's, uh, nothing new on that. Um, Jennifer, have you checked the, um, postage rates?
I am gonna tell you, I did not write it down, so I did not do it, but I am going to write it down right now.
So I'm gonna try to have a, um, just a small sample ready at some point in February, for people to look over to approve, and then you can work on the postage rates. Um, regarding payroll audit, there were some questions, uh, background budget, uh, around the, um, Town Meeting, about raises that may or may have not have happened in the Town Hall. So, um, I went through and looked at all the, the, basically, the Town Clerks, 'cause there were, um, people saying they got a raise, they didn't get a raise. Um, so I went through, and essentially, um, everyone that's listed as basically a clerk got like a two percent raise um, from fiscal eighteen to fiscal nineteen, um, which, um, according to our Town Meeting, was not voted on. So we are going to, um, reach out to our legal team and see what our options are, and what we should do in the case. It's about a thirty-four-hundred-dollar effect overall on the annual, um, budget. So we're gonna reach out to them, um, between now and our next meeting, to find out what our ramifications are, and what we need to do, to see if we need to make, what types of changes we need to make, to be in line with how the Town voted. And that was about it for my updates. Questions?
No, I just wanna make a note, I did say I was gonna email Brian Riley in regards to that, correct?
Okay, yes.
Okay. I just like to star my name and give my.
And you have the list?
I do have the list, yep.
Do you want that in soft copy? Still forward? No, okay.
Actually, yeah. I don't know if he's gonna need that, but just.
Yeah, okay, I'll send it to you.
I'm gonna be on the phone with him a lot this week. I've been trying to avoid having to call him, but better safe than sorry. Um, anything else that you're working on you wanna share?
No, not that I can think of.
Okay. I know you went to a Town, uh, a search committee, and that's why I put it there, but I, I know you guys are tag-teaming on that.
Yeah.
And, again, the information was presented tonight, so, um, with regard to personnel policy, uh, update, I am currently looking into some, uh, past payroll records and some, uh. I had looked for some job descriptions and, or, uh, uh, agreements, and unfortunately, all we found are, or we were able to come up with are appointment letters.
Okay.
So, kinda have a blank slate.
Right, and I think it should just be noted that our personnel policy is dated. Two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine, two thousand and seven?
So, it needs to be reviewed. I think after we get our financial piece in, in place, that might need to be the next thing. Anything else? All right, Mr. Reposa?
The, uh, we need to schedule the, uh, how we're gonna deal with the special permitting.
Right.
And, uh, I'll see what Hadley could, uh, help me with.
Okay, yeah, I know they have a regular scheduled meeting on Monday.
Yeah.
So I'll let them know that this is here, so that hopefully they can add it to their agenda. All right, thank you. How many, how many meetings left, Joe? Counting yet? Five. Good for you. All right, uh, so I had the warrants, so I will just read the post date of twelve.
Before you, uh, Town Council needs, uh, to review these.
Okay. I will leave them with, for the planning board to follow through, but I will work with them, and you will work with them, too. And we'll get that.
There's still five meetings.
There's still five meetings, and you're still the marijuana liaison.
Yes.
So, all right, so, um, since our last meeting, I think, maybe one. I think I, I reported on the last one, so, uh, four warrants have been signed. Uh, the first one was thirty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents, and that, um, is from general funds, donations, revolving state grants, payroll withholdings, public safety. The next warrant that was signed was in the sum of ninety-five thousand, twenty-eight dollars and nineteen cents, and those were for the same type of things, and that post date was twelve-thirteen. General fund revolving accounts. Payroll withholdings. A post date of twelve-twenty, and the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents was, are you getting all? I see you getting all. The reason that is higher is that there is a ninety-one thousand, little over ninety-one thousand, that is a chapter ninety expenditure. And the last warrant that I signed was post date twelve-twenty-seven, gift donations, revolving accounts, general funds, state grant, payroll withholdings, and public safety in the tune of thirty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. So typically, they range around thirty, thirty, yeah, thirty-two, thirty-five. And then you have your little ones that you might have a little bump in for school payments. It used to be trash that we used to always see, but we don't have that anymore. So those are the warrants that have been signed by me. FY twenty budget, I think we've kind of exhausted that, just the work that has been done, what we're doing, how we're setting it up. Um, I'm gonna send you the Town Administrator budgets, so that we can work on those. We'll have to set up a meeting just for that. Um, the park grant is a grant that was applied for by Mrs. Callahan. It was in June, July, July nineteenth, about there, July, um, June thirtieth, and then correspondence started. Um, I received an email in December, really didn't know what it was, how it was working, and we were missing some vital pieces to it. With the wonderful work of Sherry and, um, Diane during the day, they were able to converse with the, uh, grant person. And basically, that we can continue with it. There's kinda two or three items that need to be done, um, we can do that if we would like. And the great thing is, is that though the deadline was the thirty-first of December, the grant really goes into, like, two thousand and twenty-one, so though it's in and it's not complete, and if it's not ready for this year's submission, it can always be used in a future, for the next cycle. So she was fine with us continuing to do that. And so it's just the pleasure of the board if we wanna continue. It would be, um, some work that would be done at the, um, park next to the Veterans Memorial Park, so, yeah, veterans. I was gonna say soldiers, but I know it's changed. It's planting pathways, gazebos, um, fencing, things of that sort.
Is it a matching grant, or is it?
It, it is kind of a matching grant. It is, um, oops, there is a matching component, but the Centennial Committee had twenty, it's in the, it's in the, in the actual thing. It's like twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars. which would be used as the matching. So we'll use, it would be the, like, the Centennial.
So the money's already set aside for this?
Um, the Centennial Committee has not done anything with the leftover money. It would be a vote of the board to, that board, to then use it as a matching grant with this. Um, I think the goal was always, and Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you've been on that committee, um, along with me, um, that was to do something in the park to create a place for community events. We've talked about adding electrical along the backside, so that we would be able to. Mr. Davis worked on that part of the project, someone else worked on a gazebo, and was kind of piecing it together, because we didn't have, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, or seventy-five thousand. So with this grant, by matching it, it would help enhance that park for future community events. And that was kind of always the goal, was to, because I think that's what we saw in the Centennial, is that really the town coming together and being a community, and, um, creating fiber and a woven community. Um, so I think, um, the Cent- the Centennial, now they're the Cent- Centennial Commemoration Committee, will just need to do a formal vote of that money. If this doesn't go through, then they'll have to re-resort back and find out where they want to spend that money, and it's a group of nine, nine or eleven?
Nine.
Nine or eleven of us. So, um, so we can continue that. Does that sound good? Good. I'm glad we didn't lose out on it. Because that would have, would have hurt. All right, so the park grant. Town Planner, Planning Board, CMRPC, we've talked about that we have their rates. The planning board's gonna follow up, and we're just gonna continue that, um, open communication with the planning board to, to get someone in there, because this piece here, I think CMRPC is gonna be of great use for us getting the marijuana through and done. All right, Selectmen's Forum. I just wanted to let the members know, as far as this meeting goes. I've started to look into other communities, um, and how they handle public forums. Um, some of them have very strict, some of them have very loose, some people have nothing. Um, I'd like to see public forum come back. You can share your thoughts, comments here, you can share them with me privately, however, but I think that we need a venue for people who have an announcement, people who have a share, uh, people who have a question to be able to come and ask. Um, so I'd like to put that in, but I want to make sure that it, it preserves our personnel, our, our bylaws, and, um, you know, is with the, the spirit that is, that public forum is intended. So I am looking at a few of, a variety of towns', um, public forum guidelines, which I will kind of hand to you guys, and ask you for some feedback on, and then we'll go forward, um, and see how that, how that looks. But it's in the, in the gears to have it, you know, show back up, so I just wanted to let you know. Any other, um, members have a an item under Selectmen's Forum? Being none. What's the time, Tommy? I don't have my phone, how'd I do?
Nine thirty-one.
That's a long meeting. All right, so we are going to sign. They're telling me I have an invoice that I don't see. We're going to sign the minutes and the liquor license.
Have you already signed the liquor license, or no?
No, it was.
Okay, that's, yeah.
It was Dosco Computer Service invoice, but it's not in. It says, "Board of Selectmen copyright."
Nope, that's just the bad package.
You guys take that? Ooh, did I just throw that at you?
Totally.
Totally threw it at you. All right. Let me go see if it's on the, uh, present, or in the app. There is, um, there's no bill of that sort back there, so.
Question on the minutes?
Sure.
Since we did the reorg at the beginning of the minutes, should the ending be updated, or should that still be?
I just fixed it. Probably. I'm not sure. Well, yeah.
Done by the time the meeting was done.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If you'd like an update on the, the outreach that Marty's had, or the meeting that the library had in Boston, I'd be happy to do that.
Did you go to, um, Boston today?
I was in Boston last Thursday.
Did you go?
You were.
Oh, it was just me calling and calling.
Oh. Um, I can put it on the next agenda, and, and do that. Erica, are you secretary?
Nope.
Is that Andrew?
Yep.
All right. You need to sign that. All right. All right. I just made a note, I'll put it on the next meeting. Is that it?
Yeah.
That's all we got.
All right. So. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Our next regular scheduled meeting is July twenty-second, it is a Tues- uh, July.
It's nice to get six months off.
I'm hoping for summer vacation, um, I'm sorry, Tuesday, January twenty-second. Um, it is a Tuesday due to the holiday, so mark your calendars. And now, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
And Tom, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for sticking through.